He said, "Young lady," I appreciate that.
Wine and a prayer.
Some people look at it different.
This week, they don't allow us to go to the Capitol. General session tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow at 1:30 and then they're gonna have a legislative thing at 9:00 to 11:00 Wednesday and then breakout sessions at 1:30 and then general session.
Second.
M and O one.
And, yeah, that's the last, sorry, I didn't put on Martin's pile. Went through last week. Are you red or purple?
What?
Are you red or purple?
Black.
That's all I thought. She wanted that up moving pretty quickly.
See in this publication, there's a Senate bill that's in the legislative that's trying to get it changed where we don't have to send things to the paper, we just have to electronically put it on our website. So they had all the counties put in the dollar amount that they paid to their papers for publication. I thought ours was that.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, some of those was.
Oh, yeah.
Like one, oh, mine.
Hope they finally get that Senate bill. It passed the House last March the 10th on CDL drivers and it's laid in the Senate ever since and they haven't touched it. It unanimously passed the House so you can go to the CDL right at your tail.
Yeah, that was what you guys were gonna say, that's crazy. But, I mean, that just puts more time on the drivers. Two, one, two, one?
Okay, on that.
Three, nine, seven, nine, five, County Road 720.
Yeah, that may be a factor.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You want me to mail it to him? You want me to call him and say you want us to look it up?
Well, I could, he said something about me picking it up and bringing it to him and that's maybe, maybe that's what I ought to do. I'm gonna check them in all orange.
What else? Second. Thank you, in, all in favor?
Appropriations.
Yeah, look, my thing is.
Okay. How do we do that? Just have to make it?
No, I'm chairman, I'll take over. We'll just have two, if one of them can't come and we don't have a forum, so we don't have a meeting.
Check that. Check that. That helps.
Yeah. I'm gonna check the appropriations.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Ninth Officer report, Court Clerk record, James McPhee Station, under report.
I don't have the Court Clerk's preservation, but I have mine and the election board's.
I'll make motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Highway, monthly highway expenses. No monthly highway. No driving. Now, I'll make motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Allegation of alcohol reverence tax.
Okay, okay. I called him the other day because, you know, Willis came by and he came in and I gave him his plaque. So that same day, on the way home, I took Harold Bix and I called and Betty answered. I knew when Betty answered, he was sick. So I said, "I'll try next week." So, hoping this week I can get by in visiting.
I guarantee you, question is almost every million.
I have a copy of it.
I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Blanket purchase order.
Other than what I have, there's Gulchery. Fire Department? Marvin, either you or Jay, either one can sign up.
I bet you have Marvin signed it. That's his territory. I'm gonna check the blanket purchase order.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Road crossings?
PO request procedure.
As I explained to us, you guys all were in there, this is a process improvement. So the previous way was approved more than four years ago when they presented it to us in the Cota Conference that we had to have that extra step. The actual requisitioning form. They approved this, we approved this in the meeting, and now they're stating that even though we have that account number on there and you guys are aware, we'll call you, that is not the process, so you guys will get to sign them now, which kind of where they're actually fit on. So, again, this is, this is just a process improvement.
So my, my thinking is, like, I can take care of Helly and Jet.
Roger called today and he said.
In Helly and MS, that's where they found the blanket.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I can walk across the street instead of you having to drive.
That, that would be what I would say.
So how do we do it?
And I did, we'll have to do it in the meeting next week. And that's what Roger did, call again this morning and ask if we talked to you.
Are you okay with that? You take care of Cherokee, he takes care of Byron and Amory, so we're not having to drive.
Then, then we need to change Cherokees then, because we have Chairman and Vice Chair on there. So we're gonna change Cherokees to District Two. I'm thinking, just so we don't have to change these each time. District Two, and then, who wants to step up on that one then? Who wants to go ahead and split District Two and Chairman?
You may have Chairman or Vice, or Vice.
As Chairman. And then, and then, in the case that Mike becomes Chairman, then we'll change it to Vice Chair then. So we'll be District Two and Chairman. We have, we have Chairman and Vice Chair on Burlington's and Byron's. We have.
What, Neska Tunga?
Neska Tunga is Chair and Vice Chair.
Yeah, that's right.
Just leave that one?
So we can leave that, but you're over.
So Burlington is okay.
And then if you can't do it, then I.
A and B is okay. Neska Tunga, we're gonna, we're gonna leave that as Chair and Vice Chair. Cherokee, we're gonna change Gulchery.
Now, wait a minute. So Jay's Vice Chair, so he can, he can just do it and then.
And we can change this to District, District.
It's good to have backup if you can't do it.
Well, but, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but the way it is now, I'm over it and he's the backup.
Well, no, there's just two. I mean, you can have two on there.
And he can do it all the time.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, we just have two on there and it's not really a backup or a, we just have two people on there.
I think we need to continue like we've been. I meant, there's four, there's some of their checks and balances right there on that PO. That's what I told him when I.
I did too.
In, in my auditorium meeting, I said, "Look, there's four checks and balances before that thing would ever clear and the check be cast."
I told them that you guys come in every Monday morning and sign this again and you look at them then before they come in the meeting. You have the opportunity then to stop them again and then you sign them here in the meeting and that just.
It kinda went over like, because I've been talking to a county that do, that's doing all of theirs on the computer totally. The Secretaries of each district is doing it. There's no little sheet that they sign and I point blank asked the auditor, everybody in the state of Oklahoma is doing this. Yeah, I'd tell you one that didn't. I'm not gonna rat on them, but it's all done over the computer. You don't have to worry about a thing and.
Well, it's just like the signature, it's done on the computer.
Sure is. A signature pad there.
Well, just do this and.
Is that going to affect when, like, when I have to go to purchase order for District Three, because I'm not requisitioning up there?
You're still gonna send it down there to them, they gotta sign it.
So if they're, if they're gone on a Friday when we need to get that paid for, my name's utility bill were sunk?
No. Marvin comes up, yeah, Marvin comes up and signs it.
Yeah.
Or goes to the office and signs it. Gulchery, we have Chair and Vice Chair. Is that all right? Okay. Helena, we got Chair and Vice Chair. And I made.
Ambulance.
Yeah, and ambulance.
Helly and.
Yeah, that, that, Helly and.
Ambulance, we're gonna change. Well, everything usually comes through down there. They'll put on a couple up here.
Well, I'm just.
But Lacy in my office, and, and I sent Jesse an email and asked, "Can Lacy still be a requisitioning officer? Is there any conflict there?" And he said, "No, there was not, that was fine." So Lacy can sign in here also, so. And that will save you a, you know, a bunch, but if they have a stack, they may still holler at you and, and send them over to you. Allen's, I have Chair and Vice Chair, I'm with that. And Carmen. Cherokee, Brona, A and B.
Jet.
Carmen and Jet, I have Chair and Vice Chair. The only time that we'll need to change those is when that district is not a Chairman or Vice Chairman, then we'll have to put it in, like, your, your, um, Helly and Gulchery and, um, is it, sorry, Gulchery. When you're not a Chair or Vice Chair, then we'll need to put in there District Three and Chair, but we can go about that when that comes about.
So we're taking on this till next week?
No, this is, this, I'm, there's really no, like, we're just stating this is how it's gonna be, so we just need to make the motion and then I'll go ahead and put the ambulances to change it to District Three and Lacy.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So from the part of the fire departments, what has changed for them or do they just do the same thing?
Nothing, we just can't sign blanket deals.
Well, yeah, 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 but that's not it.
Can they just? I'll set it out, they're fine, I'll, I don't know. Nobody, just change.
Nothing's changing on their side.
Not a procedure for them, they continue to do the same thing and things.
Office meeting scheduled, officers meeting scheduled change to monthly.
They did, again, ask us really kinda strive that we continue to have those as monthly, not quarterly. They said if somebody can't attend, you know, that's, if you can't attend, you can't attend. But they really strongly suggested that we go back to monthly.
That's what they did when I met with them, I said, "We've, we've gone back to quarterly, where you can't get everything accomplished." Okay.
And those months we can't, I mean, those months where we happen to look at.
As long as one of us can be there.
Yeah. I mean, and then if all three of you are gone, there's still five other officers that didn't meet and.
Yeah, it's a month of the officer meeting, so.
I'll make the motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any unforeseen business?
Move we during.
All seconded.
Back up on that officer, we'll go ahead and meet that second Monday at 1:00, is that okay? There's been conflict with the first Monday at 1:00, but is, is the second Monday okay with anyone?
One is better than the other.
At what time?
1:00. Kind of keeps you up here a lot of time.
I told her this morning, I think, with coronavirus deal, the auditors are groping things to do, 'cause they're not doing anything with coronavirus.
Do you wanna change it to immediately follow up though?
Well, you never know what's gonna happen, that gives her time to eat lunch, and we never know how long these things... Just leave it up to her. There are ideas.
I have this thing making difference to me. I'm not gonna agree with you immediately, because you're already here, but...
Yeah.
That doesn't set a certain time that...
But it doesn't, for some reason, get over until 11:30, and then you have...
I think you need to designate a time for their other officers to get in.
All righty, you guys sign a good one.